Okay, I guess we're all here. 7:10. Alrighty folks, let's start. So Public Works, there's no agenda. Number two, public safety. There's an issue sheet that Jen did for me. Has to do with the RHA. As most of you know, again this evening, we had a resident here who's concerned about some issues within our community. As you know, if anybody who happened to read Friday's paper that was written, there was a lengthy story about the needles in our community and the Needle Exchange Program, as I guess they're calling it. And I've been doing as much research as I can from the outside looking in on the Regional Health Authority and where there's a place for the municipality to have input. Very hard to find that place. It looks like it's through the Local Health Improvement Group. I've found nothing else. So if in fact, and there is a Local Health Improvement Group that isn't fully membered up, but there are a couple of people in the community who are on it. So it does exist. So I would like to send a letter from council for two things. Asking for a meeting with the senior board at the RHA and for some clarification as to what the Local Health Improvement Group is, who they are, what they do, when they meet. What have they been doing? And is there room for council to be active on that group?
Wouldn't our input be to their board members? Because there's somebody from the PA, somebody from Thompson, somebody, wouldn't we...
I agree with you completely. But the response that I continually get is that it's a regional board concerned with regional issues.
So did they not...
Yeah, so did why have representatives from the PA?
Yeah, did they have, like, describe numbers of representatives from each community?
Yes.
But you can't bring your issues to your local representative?
No, because they're concerned with regional based. I'm more concerned about locally based.
For sure, yeah.
The PA actually has, um, excuse me, the most representation of any other town in the region.
So, so local members make up the biggest percentage of the northern region?
Yes, of the PA, yes.
Is that just because the chair is from the PA?
The chair isn't from the PA.
The chair is the mayor of the PA.
That's not, that's not the way it always was set out, right? Like, the PA never had, like, how many seats do they have?
Four.
Okay, well, how long has it been?
Well, one is a pass by a few nation.
Yeah, but the region.
I can see that.
So, did anybody have any reluctance or issues or hesitation in sending a letter for those two issues? A meeting with the RHA senior executive to find out about what their plan is for the PA and a question to clarify what the Local Health Improvement Group is? And is that the board where we need to get our voices heard?
Is there, is this, are we kind of doing the same thing with the CDC, with the clinic and the discussions there? Or should we ask them? Is that just maybe for us to kind of all be doing the same thing? And I don't know if we are, but...
I don't think we are. The clinic, like, the CDC and the clinic are topic specific. I'm more concerned in healthcare in general.
Okay. But is there any, yeah, but is there any...
There could be some overlap, wondering?
Or, yeah, our assistant at the CDC could help as well because, you know, like, we've got Kent, who's pretty plugged in with what's been going on over the last number of years of the whole large clinic. So if that's somebody that we could help support with that initiative, that's all I'm saying is just, we don't want to make sure we're all singing the same song, that's all.
Okay, so a letter to come. Great, alrighty. The new zoning bylaw.
First reading of the new zoning bylaw. Will need to be done December 16th so we can meet the deadline with the province for the funding. Recommending an open house on December 9th. I just received the draft of the zoning bylaw today at 4:53. I have not had a chance to fully review it yet. But just because it's first reading does not mean we can't do amend second reading and third reading. So I just need, it's just for information so council knows that it's coming for first reading at December 16th and Monday, December 9th, I believe from 5 to 7. I have to confirm that there'll be an open house here with regards to the zoning bylaw. And I will circulate it to all managers that have involvement with it and stuff for comment.
And we have a Kelsey Planning District meeting tomorrow lunch.
That's the development plan, this is the zoning bylaw. Yeah, sorry.
So is it public information now?
It's just in the draft version, but yeah, it can be public information.
We could share with the CDC and...
Absolutely. Yeah, because it'll be, it'll be public knowledge on the 9th as well when we have our open house.
So, and can you email council?
Yeah, it's, it's on, yeah, it's attached to the agenda. Being a draft, I don't know if we should have posted draft.
Yeah, I don't know, I just think the more information we get out of, out about...
Oh, yeah, about having the open house and stuff, yeah. You can go to the website, it'll go to the website, our Facebook page and in the paper.
Okay, payroll and accounts.
We will require a resolution for pay period 24 in the amount of $111,757.65, sorry. Town of the PA checks, 23865 to 23931 in the amount of $208,087, sorry, $208,087.80. And EFTs in the amount of $47,363.37. Did not notice any checks that really jumped out at me. It was one for Minister of Finance at $72,000, which was the 2019 assessment levy. $27,000 for the PA Recycling Center, that was, it's for MMSM. It's money that the town claims for the recycling center and then we just provide it to them. Now, has had any questions, resolutions required?
Okay, I have a question. So I have three very large checks here to sign. They're not included in this.
It'll be in the next run.
So, again, just for clarity sake, what gives me the right to sign this without a resolution?
Because they're part of the budget.
Because it's for about a million four. Right, so that's why I'm asking, right?
How's your banker account?
This won't clear mine. There's $198,000 to Brat Tractor, $718,000 to Minister of Finance, and $567,000 to the receiver general. And I'm okay to sign those even though there's no resolution?
Yes, because they've been passed through the budget or through a tender. Resolution which would have already been passed.
You have that scare going through your face?
Okay, I just wanted for clarity sake, right? It's a lot of money. Any other questions on the finance, you guys? Okay, resolution to come. Interim operating budgets.
Require a resolution authorizing to expend funds in 2020 until such time as the 2020 budget is passed. Section 63 of the municipal act states that a council may adopt an interim operating budget to have an effect only until the council adopts the operating budget for the fiscal year. And the controller has provided a breakdown. If you want me to go into detail or...
Anybody got any questions on this? It's a thing we do annually so that they can continue to operate until the budget is passed.
So a resolution would be required.
Okay, Manitoba 150.
This one's more so, more for information. Manitoba 150 grant, we are moving forward with this. In the year 2020, sorry, in 2020 Manitoba is celebrating its 150th anniversary. Manitoba 150 Host Community with Support from the Richardson Foundation has partnered with Manitoba's 55, sorry, Manitoba's 55 community foundations to grant matching funds through the Build 150 program to leave the legacy of the province's 150 celebrations. Since the town does not have a community foundation to represent the community in this initiative, the Community Foundation of Swan Valley has agreed to coordinate and oversee this one-time opportunity to provide matching funds. The Manitoba Build 150 Committee has allocated $10,000. And at the October 28th, 2019 council meeting, council passed resolution 2019-215 whereby council authorized the mayor and the acting CEO to sign the letter of understanding with the Community Foundation of Swan Valley, Inc. with regards to the endowment Manitoba Build 150 program. Council agreed to contribute up to $10,000 in matching dollars attached to the grant application that was recreated, that was created with the help of the Community Foundation of Swan Valley. Council's okay with this application. We will start advertising it on our Facebook, website, paper, etc. The deadline will be January 31st, 2020. This is to be received as information for now. And then council will need to decide on a date to review and award the grant money. Just wanted council to be aware of the application. If there's any concerns, we'll move forward with it.
Any questions? No, okay. Trappers Festival sponsorship.
Every year the town provides the following for the Trappers Festival. Waiving rental fee for Roy H. Johnson Arena and the Winton Pool. Waiving rental fees for tables from KRC. Sponsorship of family fun events with a grant of $750. Allowing Public Works to assist the Kinsmen with development of staging areas, starting line and dog race trail on Helpful Lake and other areas required to assist with site preparation and development for Fort Wupitup and town events. Use of all suitable vacant lots for the logging events and other activities. Allow the closure of Edwards between 3rd and 4th Street on Friday and Saturday, between 4th Street and the Back Lane Adventures Way on Saturday for street hockey. Donating 200 pins and a grant in the amount of $2,009.10 to cover insurance costs. This is approximate in-kind service in the amount of $13,000, which is well over the Bill Bannock commitment of $5,000. Council needs to approve this if they are in favor of it by resolution. I'm also asking that if we could possibly just move forward with this, if we could do a resolution where council would agree to this for the rest of their term so it doesn't have to come back every year. If there's anything different than these, then it would be brought forward. Because this is the same thing probably for the last 20 years, right?
Everybody's okay with it?
It just makes it a little easier.
So resolution, and then we can bring it. This is a goal for the next, the rest of your term.
You guys are all good with it? I can't see Carrie back there, she's good with it? Yeah, okay.
The only thing I don't understand is why we, why we're comparing Trappers to Bill Bannock in here.
Oh, sorry, that's because it's part of their sponsorship packages. Sorry, I should have mentioned that. And the sponsorship packages is the fur queen...
Oh, the package, not the actual...
Yes, I'm sorry, I ordered that wrong, yes.
Because when I was reading this initially, I was confused as to why we would compare one to the other.
Yes, over the...
Yes, thank you.
All right, 4.5, sale of surplus items.
A notice of sale was, a notice of sale was advertised in the past times and posted to the town's website. This is in accordance with our policy being surplus equipment, GG120. We just advertise it and then people bid. They have provided, the purchasing department has provided bids and the highest recommendations, I don't know if you want me to go through all of them. Anything that wasn't bid on will just remain in the, for next time. All the bids were the highest bids that would be accepted.
And then we just, there's one item that didn't meet the minimum?
That didn't meet the minimum.
Yeah, so, yeah, so anything that didn't go or were advanced, they would just go back into the inventory for the next...
So we don't make a decision whether this one goes forward or not? Because it didn't meet, like, it's reference number T182019. It's a 1991 Spartan fire truck. And the minimum bid was 2,000, the bid was 1,026, so that would be just rejected.
Include the item on next year's sale, surplus items.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
So I just, we need a resolution for all of this.
Any other questions on the bids, folks?
It's been a few years since we've done this.
It's a nice way to clean up.
Everybody's good? Yeah?
Yeah.
4.6, floor repair.
Is Sam sitting out there?
Yeah.
Will he...
I believe so.
Will he come in? So you'd speak on this?
Yeah, I, and if there's any questions, I'm sure, yeah.
I'll just start off. An invitation to tender was sent to suppliers and advertisement was placed in the town's webpage, Merck's, and the past good times for a repair replace a flooring of Roy H. Johnson Arena. There was two tenders received, and then I will let Sam... If that's all right?
Kat, the first, the first title received was a complete in terms of both of the scopes that we've recommended for, we require for pricing. So I'll just read the recommendation that we came up with this team. An incomplete bid package was also received from Mike's Zillency Construction, which was received on time. But the missing page was detailing the bid price was received an hour and 32 minutes after the submission deadline. But it was actually received before the openings of the bids occurred. The policy rules that incomplete submissions should be rejected out of hand over the submission was the sole submission that included the full scope of work that we'd asked for. So if it is eliminated, we would be forced to re-tender. Tender review team wanted to provide the opportunity for council to review the case facts and determine if they would like to overrule the policy and accept the bid as valid. So that's where we stand on that. I can get into the next part of this recommendation depending on...
Question on the invitation to tender was sent to suppliers. Who did you send them to?
You'd have to speak to all, wait, that was the purchasing agent for this specific...
I'm curious how many went out and who to.
I think we just put it on Merck's, I'm not sure if that language is, if that language is correct.
Well, I just, I'm reading this tender acceptance recommendation. And in details of tender, it says an invitation to tender was sent to suppliers and an advertisement was placed in the town's webpage, Merk's, in the past times. So I'm just wondering who you sent them to for invitation?
Yeah, I'd have the purchasing agent would probably better suited to speak to them.
I'd also like to comment that there could be a possibility that Chad came to my business to look for a quote. I have absolutely nothing to do with quotes as a business owner. And I don't, I don't feel that I'm a conflict in this conversation at all, but it, just wanted to put it out there. It could be a possibility that the quote part of it for the supply came from my store.
Would he be buying it from your store, Carrie?
Possibly if he came, like, if he came to us, I don't know if he did or not. I'm unsure.
It's up to you to...
Yeah, like, I don't, I'm not part of that in any way. I just kind of take the payment if it comes later on, but... So I don't know how somebody feels about that.
I think we need to go back and, like, I don't feel like looking at the prices that are there. I'm more leaning more towards just from, I walk on the floor five, six times a day there. And to do a kind of a temporary fix, I don't even know how that would even, I don't even know how that would work or...
So I can speak to that a little bit, yeah, so I kind of, I did speak with Chad a little bit about that part of the job. And because the, the repair portion was a little bit less than our budgeted amount, I did speak to him about doing the entire hallway and the one changer that's damaged within the scope of our budgeted price. And that can be accomplished with those additional few repairs. So we can do the entire hallway that's in bad shape, not just repairing it, the entire hallway. Also, the, the portion is in front of Amber and Chris's office. And then there's two repairs in the, in the main lobby and then two repairs by the, I guess we did the pole bench.
So is that pricing here, Sam?
No, we, we, we were able, that's why we asked for the full replacement cost so we could extrapolate the unit cost per square foot. So once we saw that that was well over our budgeted amount, we were able to work backwards and do that. And so we confirmed that with, with the Zillency Construction.
So are you suggesting then that we do the larger one, the larger price model?
No, it's, it's actually, we fall somewhere in between both of them. So we budgeted $75,000 for this, so his lower price being 40-some thousand. We asked that we get to spend the additional amount to do as much work as we can. And so it turns out that he's able to do the entire hallway, the one changer that's in bad shape, the foyer in front of Chris and Amber's office, and a few of the other spot repairs that we laid out. And then potentially next year we could talk about doing the entire, entire lobby. The lobby isn't as bad a shape, but if we're going to do it, we should do it all. And also, I guess, secondary to that, the sizes of the available flooring is not the same as the existing flooring, so there'd have to be transition pieces done. And all the transitions and the colors are not exactly what's down. So it is actually probably in our benefit to just do the entire hallway and...
So when you're doing a, and this is, my questions are more about the whole process, I guess, than the actual bids. So when you're doing these bids and it comes in, is there an amount that, so let's just say we find another $100,000. And then we can say, well, while looking by your price per square foot, $250 now. Like, at what point in time has it now become that this, another guy or whoever could have came up with a cheaper price now that we increased these amount of square footage? And the only reason why I'm asking that is because of other, other tenders where we kind of wanted to say, well, why can't we just get it done? There's a rule that someone points out and say, no, we can't go and do it. But now we're kind of going back the other way and say, well, just use $75,000, Alex.
Well, you know, if I can't...
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Governments live and die by technicalities and wording, right? So where's the permission in our purchasing policy that allows us to deal with this tender?
How, I'm so sorry.
Well, we have a purchasing policy, right? And so he brought information after close, right? What in our policy gives us the permission to review that?
Well, that, and that's what, that's why we were bringing it to you because you guys have the authority to overrule the policy.
Where does it say that?
I'm not sure exactly whether that would say that in the policy, but...
I don't think we do. Not without going through the process of altering the policy and then coming back to the tender.
What do you mean by overrule the policy then?
Well, we have a policy, right? We have a policy and procedure for, for tendering purposes. And it states the rules and the procedures and how to do it. It doesn't anywhere in there give us the authority with the current policy to talk about this tender.
But doesn't, it doesn't give you authority to reduce scope? So because I, I read this as two, two bids, repair and close all.
I think the mayor is referring for the, the fact that the bid sheet came in after the...
Oh, after the, yes, that's what he said, yeah.
I, I don't think we have the authority.
So that being said, we're going to put it up for tender again?
And if you want to amend the policy and procedure manual, then we need to amend it. Technicalities, right?
No, that's, okay.
There's nothing in, there's nothing, although, any flexibility on that?
That, that part I believe was recommended for purchasing. I thought that council had the ability to do so.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
Then we will re-tender.
Yeah, because it says the policy rules that her incomplete submission shall be rejected out of hand, so...
It says right, like... Well, okay, you know what I mean? Because if we're, if we change... I understand that, that he has left the room, right? And I understand that he is not part of this, this discussion. But you can't deny the fact that he is a town councillor, this is his debt, right? And that being said, we have a clearly written policy and procedure manual that we can't just change. Because if we just change it, we could give the perception of special treatment.
That's fair enough. And it would say...
Make precedent, yeah. So there could very well be a flaw in our purchasing policy that we should address.
So are you allowed though, let's just say everything was in on time, are you allowed to accept the, you know, their bid, but then give the person, give them more? Is that, is that, is that in our, is that okay?
Because, I don't know, like, we can provide a scope change, which is why we have the high end and the low end, right? So we provided, this is how much, we want to do the entire repair, so he gives us price for that. Here's the bottom end of it, he's providing the price for that. So he's comfortable doing either or, so I feel like in the middle of that, I think would be a both bit. I think it's once you go beyond the scope of what your original project would be, like, if we were saying, now we want you to do all of it. I think that would potentially, like, you know, the front foyer, I think that would probably change the, the standard.
Could you also, when you get back to us, could you also send, get Graham or whoever elder to let us know who they sent the invitational tenders to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we tender?
And again, if there's a change that needs to be made to the policy, let's bring that forward and make the change.
And this is something that can be done, like, anytime of year, right? At the, like, putting a, like, it could be done in the winter time?
Yeah, they were planning on starting, I believe, they were hoping sometime in December. So if it gets pushed to the new year, we'll just have to ask for the, the money to be carried over into 2020.
She and Al, I'm sure I kind of got that, but I think we have each of us who received it. It's an incomplete package.
Okay, thank you. If we can open the doors again, that would be wonderful.
Got some heat out here.
Are you in town on Thursday?
I'm in town every day.
All right, number 4.7, Christmas Greetings. Merry Christmas.
CJR, CJR Christmas Greetings. In 2018, the town did option three in the amount of $132. Option three, however, this was not budgeted for, as council wished to proceed with this. Option three is send six goodwill greetings, $132 plus GST. Or if you guys want to do higher ones...
Are we going to spend some money on the radio and say Merry Christmas?
As the mayor of the town is willing to say Merry Christmas to the citizens.
So, resolution to come, everybody's okay with it?
Option three?
Option three, yeah. Okay. 4.8, there's some discussion on this one that I'm not sure...
We're ready for?
We're ready for, or public consumption just yet.
Yeah, there's some underlying factors.
So would anyone have a problem if we moved this, this one into in-camera? And then when we come out with the recommendation, we'll go back to the public? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Alrighty. 4.9, the Blizzard.
Kelsey Recreation has received a request from the OCM Blizzard seeking sponsorship of in-kind use of ice rental fees for their six games booked at the Roy H. Johnson Arena. The games are booked for December 20th, January 8th, January 28th, February 14th, February 15th, and the 21st. The ice rental fee would be approximately $304 per game. The total sponsorship would be $1,827 for six scheduled games. If the town provides sponsorship, then OCM Blizzard would provide a free advertising rink board at the GLMC worth $700.
So in my opinion, what is a free advertising rink board?
It would be a big board around the ice.
You know, where the studios, you know, they see the, like, an advertising...
So what, they're going to put, like, the Blizzard sign up here?
It would be top of the pile on the second round.
Ready to be a total force on OCM? I think this is a great idea, it actually doesn't really cost us anything. Because it's ice, the building's there, you lose a bit of public skating, but you'll drag more people into the arena. And it's, you know, we want to make it a community gym, so I would fully support this.
To say it's worth $1,827, that would be if we were renting it out.
Yeah, if she charged it, it would be $304 per game.
Yeah, so to say that it's not actually worth that to us, but, yeah. I, I don't know, I think it's a really good thing too. I think it's, it's a good way to show some solidarity and that we want the Blizzard to remain in our community. to remain in our community, so I'm all for it.
Everybody's good with it?
Yep.
Yes.
Is that a, mm, I want to talk about it, or, mm...
I need to think more about it. I've been thinking about this for a while now. I, I agree that we just seem to be giving a lot lately, that we're not necessarily budgeted for.
It's not a cost though, right?
There's, there's no cost to this, there's...
You're operating a building anyways, it's like reassigning your hours, you're paying for it anyways. You're not closing the rink or opening it up.
Is, is the consensus, the majority in favor?
Well, I have...
Okay, all right. Okay, four point one zero, AllNet.
Using the project issue sheets, issues function within AllNet. There are two functions in AllNet that would be useful for council and management. Council needs to determine parameters and how they want to use both of these functions. All council and management have to have the same understanding of what each of these functions are being used for, and everyone must use it. My recommendation is to, for council to provide the assistant C E O clear direction for use of each function, and the assistant C E O will create a basic procedural manual for each function for council and managers. I would also recommend that we start using this for January first, twenty-twenty.
I'll be honest with you, I don't even know what we're talking about there, because I don't know AllNet well enough, and every time I go and look for something, it's not in there anyways.
Yeah, it's empty.
Whether reports or bylaws or anything else.
Everything's there.
Well, not really, because I have looked in the past, and they say, no, it's not there, and then Randy put something up after I looked, and she said, oh, I just put it in there, and it shows the date going in, so even if you look at certain reports, like, it's... So, I don't disagree that it might be a great idea, and I'm with you, Jen, like, if we want to use it, then it has to be active, like...
And there has to be parameters, so...
Well, there's a lot of information in there, and then there's a lot of things that come out of our meetings that sometimes we don't get follow-up on. So, if we, let's just say capital items, so today we're paying for a new loader or something. So, when we approve the budget back in April or May on your projects, if we could put for capital items, let's put this new loader, and then keep us abreast of what's happening with that loader.
Wow, the tender going out.
Tender going out, did it, you know, because so many times it seems like things are just forgotten, and we're wondering what's going on.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, so, so if we, it's gonna take us a year to work through it, right, to figure out what we, what we want, but I, I think we should start, because I don't think this current information method is working as well as it could. And it's all there? I use AllNet a lot, I look at it lots, right, because the bylaws are there.
But even some of the bylaws aren't there. Because I look, I found some that weren't there, and Randy had to put them on there.
Well, thanks.
Because I was looking for them.
I was looking for that one, too, so I... But there's a, there's a lot of things in there, and I think it needs to become more, and a search function.
Yeah, could we get a bit of an overview of them? Because, again, we're just, I'm stumbling through, I don't know if anybody else is with it, but I kind of just pick away and look at it every once in a while, but you don't really know what I'm looking for bylaws, I just go to the website and take it off the website.
Yeah.
You have to follow...
Easy to come see me.
You have to follow the header, and you go to whatever, whatever.
Well, you know, maybe, yeah, and maybe in January, as we started in January, maybe we could have a one evening meeting about AllNet, and how to get the most out of it.
Sure, yeah, that would be good.
Sit here and play with it.
That's right, right, we'll, we'll get it up on the screen somewhere.
There's lots of tutorials, too, that are good on that.
You all know I'm an early riser, so I look at it often in the mornings.
Go to issues. Okay, is there anything on there? Okay, community, what's it say? Go to community. Okay. I was playing around with it the other day, hey?
Yeah, well, no, you started this, and then, and then you set it up.
Okay, so, we'll, so, look at it, it's there, right?
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, I can hear it.
And then in January, we'll have a special meeting.
Sorry, I have more time than I usually do to play with this one.
Clearly. And so...
There's a lot of tutorials.
Yeah, okay, guys, we'll do it in January.
Yeah.
Okay, look at it between now and then.
Come see me or call me if you have any questions.
Yep, but it is all there.
It's not so much having a question, it's, it's really knowing what's in it and what the value is in it. So, it's like, it's like, you know, a software program. I can, you can tell me how great it is, but if I don't really know how to navigate it, then, if I don't really know what I'm looking for, because I don't really know what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
But if it's, but if I know that that's an actual, it is all in there, because I have went and looked, and I have not found it.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in there. The, the flaw with this that we've brought up previously, it needs a search function. There's no search function, because if you could search by keyword, you might find a lot more of what you're looking for.
Oh, yeah.
There is a search function.
All right, well, I don't know where it is, I haven't found it.
Right there.
Yeah.
Search.
Search, yeah.